Good evening. We are now live, it's working. We have a blue light, we are good, well, blue, white, I don't know. So, good evening and welcome to the Finance Committee meeting of Tethers Town Council on Tuesday, 22th of March at six o'clock. We'll head straight in with the first item on the agenda, which is 81621, declarations of any discloseable pecuniary interests to receive any additional interest not already registered. Obviously.
Just, we've got some things on Charles Borough Centre there, do I have to call it as a trustee of Charles Borough Centre?
Okay.
It's in the paperwork.
It is, it is relating to the risk register. If you feel that you have a conflict of interest when we get to that particular item, you're welcome to declare it there. It's not a pecuniary interest because you don't receive any money for that, but if you feel that you can't be unbiased in the approach, I would suggest that you don't take part in the discussions or the voting.
Thank you. I remember Charles Borough, there's definitely no, no voting, not in any position, just a shout and then they're going to be sworn.
Yeah, so if you don't have any influence on decisions that are made and what we're looking at doesn't have an impact, then that's fine. But thank you for that. Obviously, as we go through, something does come up and you think, I feel uncomfortable here, or I'm feeling aware, just say so, please. So, 81721, apologies for absence, please, Mr Crimmick.
No, I'm sure you can say, yeah.
Thank you. And then 81821, the minutes, to confirm the minutes of the committee meeting held on the 15th of February, which were received by full council on the 22nd as a true record.
Just one thing on 762, B Cannon nominates themselves for control review.
You're right.
Thank you.
And I think this is something about the email sent to, I must say, that councillors? It wasn't read properly, it was other councillors, not on the Finance Committee, not, not.
Cannon, that's not wrong, 762 as well.
Oh, yeah. So, which, so, yes, B Cannon, so, on agenda item 76221, Mr Crimmick.
Yep.
It states, as this was resolved, councillors were asked to nominate themselves to undertake the internal control review before 31st of March 2022. Councillor Jay James and B Tullet will serve for the following year.
And then the result, but the Finance Committee asked for a council, that is not a serving councillor.
Serving committee member.
Yeah, it should read committee member rather than councillor, that resolution. So, pending those two amendments, are we happy to adopt those as a fair and true reflection of the meeting?
Yes, yeah.
Lovely. We'll then go on to 81921, which is the contracts update, note the attached schedule of contracts. Again, this has been circulated in advance. Any questions, queries or comments, please, team? No, in that case duly noted, thank you, Alan. And we go on to 82021, which is the committee financial decisions, to note the attached schedule of financial decisions. Yeah. Everybody happy?
Yeah.
Super, thank you. And then we go on to 82121, which is the approval of payments, to receive and approve the attached listings of payments made since the last meeting. As always, Alan has provided a summary and the recommendation is that the making of these payments be approved by this committee and recommended to full council. Again, any questions, queries or comments, please, team? May I have a proposer then? Thank you, Councillor Harvey, seconder, thank you, Councillor Tullet, all those in favour, unanimous, thank you. We then move on to 82221, which is the financial report for the 11 months to the 28th of April 2022. The requirement is that the financial report is approved by the committee. Any questions, queries or comments, please? What I would reiterate is, as we've spoken previously, caution is still being maintained in terms of expenditure till we know the final position and there are a couple of committees that are actually overspent, so we need to be very mindful, yeah, obviously that actually, if where possible, the overspend actually relates to increased income and if not, just being very mindful of the impact that that has on the council as a whole.
Sure.
Yes.
Quick question, one thing, all the committees that are overspend, is there a pattern of overspend over the time, over past times and everything on those committees?
It's a very interesting question. I tend to live in the here and now and not look to the past because that's distant country.
So, shouldn't we be looking in to see if there is a pattern at some time?
We should be incredibly mindful that if there are overspends against the budget, that either those overspends have been identified and supported by this council, so for example, where in the narrative has been highlighted, there has been overspend against budget in venue communications, but that's due to the increased commercial activities, so there's obviously a balancing equal but opposite in terms of income. There were some challenges in terms of amenities and some of that has already been agreed to be funded from the reserves, that was a committed decision as per the previous, one of the previous agenda items. But if there are committees that are continually overspending, they should not be because we set a budget and we are required to operate within it. In the same way, sadly, those committees who have underspent will be picking up that slack and where, you know, potentially in the past we've been able to go, well, we actually haven't spent that, we need to transfer that into reserves, you know, for next year or something like that, that situation doesn't exist. We need to be very mindful of that. Quite impressed that Heritage and Town Events managed to come in under their budget, given that we reduced their budget by 30% last year, but obviously that's a reflection of where we've been in terms of pandemic and not being able to deliver in quite the way that was envisaged. The overall conclusion is that the council will not exceed the overall budget and should generate a surplus, however, as per the previous meeting, we identified that surplus and we may need to use it for other purposes and that was obviously agreed at the last meeting and ratified by full council. So, we'll see how that all comes. Any further questions, please? If we're all happy, may I have a proposer, please? Thank you, Dennis. May I have a seconder? Thank you, Barbara, all those in favour? Lovely, unanimous, thank you very much, that's a resolved item. So, we then move on to 82321, which is the projects budget for 2022 and 23 and obviously then into 2324 and this is to review the budgets, project budgets for those two years and to recommend the project budgets for those years to full council. Anybody want to go for a starter for ten? What I would say is, I think there are significant points that are raised there that need to be taken into consideration when the committees start their budget setting processes for the 2023/24 financial year come, you know, summertime realistically, going into September and October, because obviously there are reserves that are identified there that do need replenishing and require that level of long-term planning.
Can I ask a question for me?
Yes.
The cemetery, your unspent, your unspent projects from previous years, that just get carried on, yeah?
That does get rolled over, doesn't it?
What we have done is, previously we ended up in a bit of trouble because we were budgeting these, this work, as we happened to have two years ago, it didn't, the tenders went out, now they're actually being executed. So, what we've done is, what hasn't been spent in the first column, the 2021/22 column, if we estimate that it's only been spent, we've carried it forward into the, into the second column. But if you see it in the, in the, in the first column, the 2021/22 column, and it's not in the 22/23 column, we're assuming that that's actually going to be spent in this financial year. There's no automatic carryover and that's one of the, if I can add, that's one of the advantages of this new methodology that we've done, because previously we were doing this way back in October, November, we were estimating the projects would be completed, they weren't completed, but they were budgeted in the following year. So, at least with this methodology, we're carrying forward projects, so we don't have the situations where projects were budgeted two years ago and are being executed in the current year.
Can I ask one more as well, sorry?
Please.
The allotments, renewal reserve, et cetera, et cetera, have we any more news on regarding the money we have in the background that we can spend or possibly not spend?
There are two reserves in the allotments, one is the land, which we know that can only be used to acquire land for allotments and the other one, we've put it in the reserve policy that it's actually at the discretion of the allotment committee.
It was just about, there was some discussion, I think Dennis brought it up, the fact the allotment with land money was possibly be used for something else because it was given over to somebody.
The allotment land money cannot be used for anything other than the purchase of allotment land.
Yeah, that was my impression, but, yeah. All right, can I?
Any other questions, please? In that case, the recommendation is that the Finance Committee recommend the attached projects, projects budget to full council. Do I have a proposer, please? Thank you, Councillor Harvey. Do I have a seconder, please? Thank you, Councillor Crawford, all those in favour? It's nice, we'll take turns, it's very civilised. So, we move on to 82421, financial risk assessment and this is to review the financial risk assessment that was distributed to the committee members and published with this agenda. The recommendation is to, that we review it and recommend it to full council for adoption, it does need to sit with full council as a final thing, so I think in terms of the issue that you raised earlier, I think on the whole, most of what we need to discuss is fine if you want to, you know, come out of the discussion for a particular item, that's entirely up to you, but I don't see it as being an issue.
No.
So, would you like to do this or shall I? Shall I? Okay.
I have a digression.
Nice. So, the approach this year has been to update the financial risk assessment as applied in previous years, we've identified some additional risks for the forthcoming year and, you know, indeed, obviously they exist now, but obviously it's, it's putting them in. So, the risk of higher inflation on cost inputs, while the budget was prepared, the rate of inflation was not expected to increase significantly and obviously, as we all know, that has changed somewhat in recent days and is continuing to be a state of flux. Number two, the risk of the council of the Charles Borough Centre has been reviewed, as has a new risk relating to the recovery of monies from the Royal British Legion. The maintenance risk of St Peter's Church has also been identified and there is an estimate of £400,000 to repair the roof and frankly, the, this council does not have that money sitting in its back pocket. There is a need to mitigate this risk by seeking third-party funding to undertake the urgent repairs and I think that's potentially why it is more significant risk, because those repairs, you know, if they don't happen, they could potentially seriously undermine the structural integrity of the building.
And we have a legal obligation, don't keep.
Absolutely. There is also a need to look at the long-term use of St Peter's Church. Number four, failure to recover monies from GW Standforth, henceforth known as GWAS, has also been identified as a risk. There is a significant indebtedness to the council and this also needs to be managed. There are too few signatories on the GWAS bank account despite our finance officers' sterling efforts and this is the challenge that is being faced rather than the inability of GWAS to repay it, so ultimately they can pay, it's just that physical moving of money. Action plans have been initiated to mitigate this risk, we've got a few meanwhile, sort of, one phrase, not bodges, but make do amends, but we need to resolve this effectively.
So, have we got enough signatures now from the?
What we, if I can respond, what we have is, we've got two bank accounts, we've tried to move as much income as possible into the, into the Unity Bank accounts and there are a lot of signatories on that, we have no risk there. The problem is, is we have a certain amount of money in one of the accounts and we just can't get that money out and the signatories on, oh, there's one councillor who's a signatory, not even the chairman is a signatory to that particular account. So, for example, we've really battled to get the audit done because we couldn't get bank statements, it took months to even to get that simple process, so we really are relying on non-councillor trustees who have ended up being the bank signatories and we've really down to one or two, you know, and I, we just had to, we started a process to get the chairman on and then to at least get an officer on, because that's the risk at the moment, the officers can do absolutely nothing, no one will speak to us.
So, you have started that.
We've started.
All we just trust.
It has been a work in progress for a period, quite a considerable period of time.
September 2019 is when the issue hits us.
We haven't had a Standforth meeting in a considerable amount of time either.
No, and we're pushing for that as well, from a council perspective, it is something that needs to be resolved and quickly.
Absolutely.
Because, yeah, the risk exposure is just too great and Standforth is a standalone entity and we've made so many strides forward in having it identified and separated that this is kind of the final hurdle and obviously 29, September 2019, it started and then, yeah, something happened around March 2020, made people wobble a lot, yeah, and unfortunately, the whole working from home and lockdowns have not been our friend in a banking situation that's testing at the best of times to change mandates, shall we say.
And a particular bank is not really proactive in the signatures, I'm not mentioning them.
I would suggest that that particular bank has presented issues for a number of organisations that I am aware of, particularly in terms of the mandates and consistency in their approach would be much appreciated.
Thank you, Chair.
Moving on from GWAS, there are a few operational financial risks associated with the change in processes. These include the need for a service level agreement with the agents monitoring the council's leases and the need to improve credit vetting for new customers using the cemetery services. What I would highlight is, no risks that were identified in previous years have been removed from the financial risk assessment. Much of that has been more because of where we've been in the last couple of years, that actually, yeah, rather have a period of time where things are embedded, safe and then potentially next year we look at taking that off and I would actually like to review, I personally feel, the risk register because of some of the items that we've got going on and you will see the schedules and review of timings and that side of things, that potentially, we actually review this on a six monthly basis. So, after all of that, any questions, queries or comments, please? In that case, may I have a proposer to recommend the adoption of the financial risk assessment to full council, please? Whose turn is it? Thank you, Councillor Crawford. Can I have a seconder, please? Thank you, Councillor Tullet, all those in favour? Fabulous, thank you. We then move on to 82521, which is the financial regulations, see, I'm hitting you with it all today, all the exciting things. So, this agenda item is to review the financial regulations that was distributed to committee members and has been published on the website. The decision, the recommendation is that the financial regulations as amended are recommended to full council for approval. Again, we can only recommend this, you've all had sight of this and I do thank Alan for making it really, really easy to track the changes with the green highlights being the suggested change and the turquoise highlights, which will be the reference to be updated when the regulations are approved. Councillor Crawford.
One thing I noticed, and I did mention it, that, I can't know which section it is now, but in one section it says, as opposed to 4.4.
Yes.
And it says 4.4 below and it should be 4.4 above, I'm just only a little jingling.
Yes, and once it's actually changed, that's on page six, isn't it?
Five point one.
Yeah, five point one, so yes, that is actually highlighted in blue, so the reference will change, because we've added bits in, that's a reference to be updated once the regulations are approved.
No, I read this bit of this year.
Oh, as yellow, confuse me. But yes, that will be, all of those ones, yeah, once, once it's updated, those, those bits will be updated. Oh, please do.
How long do you keep delivery notes for?
Good question, well asked.
We very seldom have delivery notes, believe it or not, we tend to get the person initiating the order, actually signs, would give us the confirmation and with everything being electronic these days, there's very few delivery notes that we actually process. Anything that we receive hot copy, we file for seven years.
Everything is on the system, so you can go back to.
Yes, but I, I have to be honest, I can't, you know, there's one company that sends us delivery notes, but very seldom, because it's delivered to us and it's just a piece of, it's part of the processes that have actually fallen away over the years.
As I say, I receive fewer and fewer delivery notes, quite often the invoices are inside or, or there's nothing with them, which is always helpful and then you cross-reference with the electronic version.
Well, there's a couple of the white stuff now comes through on your, you do it through bank transfer, you don't have this stuff.
Yeah. But you feel that the system that you have in place for approval of the invoices, should there not be a delivery note, is robust enough for any potential queries?
It is, but it can be improved, so from the 1st of April, I'm, I'm introducing a new control because of the, all the electronic software that we're using enables us to do, become more and more flexible, so I'm actually introducing a new goods delivery control where not only can I refer to an email, I'll actually get the person to sign and at the moment we refer to an email, we've got an email confirming that we can pay for that particular, that the service has been rented, I will now get a signature rather than that reference.
If you don't have a delivery note, how do you know you had the right stuff delivered and it's not been substituted?
It's the confirmation that, that, you know.
So, in terms of like the dray deliveries and I'm thinking where that would probably happen like the most would be tea rooms and bar supplies for the Carnegie, we have a full delivery note still for those, don't we?
For the bars, we do, they don't get forwarded to us as finance, so maybe that's something that we should, we'll have a look at again. We're doing, from the 1st of April, we're doing a little bit of revamp, so, so I'll have a look at that, but I know that delivery notes are received for certainly the tea room, but they copy invoices, that's really what they are and the same with the, with the bar stock. They have, and then they have, or V and C, they actually have someone who updates their stock based on the delivery note, so if we need to query something, we go to those delivery notes.
Okay, can I just, please, I'll delay it.
No, do it.
Supposing something comes in as a self by life, there's no delivery note, we just book it in on that day and then it's to sell by life is four years from now or whatever?
Well, that's actually an operational.
Ignore that.
No, and it's a valid question, I know David and the team take great pride in their stock control and stock circulation and are very, very mindful of it, so obviously things are labelled as well when they come in.
I have, just because I was thinking of fleet, et cetera, et cetera.
The other side of things is, we shouldn't be stock piling either. So, any further questions on the financial regulations? So, the recommendation is that we recommend the financial regulations to full council, may I have a proposer, please? You're getting good at this delegation, thank you, Councillor Tullet. Can I have a seconder, please? Thank you, Councillor Harvey, all those in favour? Unanimous, thank you.
Straightforward, there's a new to you.
Yeah. So, we move on to 82621, which is an update on internal control review and review of bank reconciliations. Over to you, Alan, because it's got your name on it.
Thank you, Chair. Just in terms of the internal control review, I feel very guilty because we organised some dates through the chairman and I wrote it down, some notes and I realised this morning that I've actually shredded the notes in my efficiency to get it on paper on my desk, so I'll set that up, I think we can, I think we set a date for early April and I'll circulate that tomorrow and just confirm that. It will be members of this committee, so there was chairman, councillor Tullet and I think councillor Crawford, you were the, you were the backup, we got you to do that. We did ask all the other councillors, just the mayor responded, but we thought it would be very unfair to put that burden on the mayor. In terms of bank reconciliations, we actually did make some progress, but the problem that we have is that we probably have about 200 bank reconciliations, so what we've made in arrangement was, is we're converting all our daily bank reconciliations into monthly reconciliations and as soon as that's done, councillor Wright will come in and actually have a review, but it's easier for him to review the one, every, you know, one monthly one than virtually 150 daily ones, so that's in progress and we'll have that done by the end of this week, hopefully. So that's in progress and we'll have that done by the end of this week, hopefully.
Any questions on that item, please? Sorry, excuse me. Super. And that update duly noted, thank you. And we go on to eight two seven twenty one, which is the update on the finance officers' reforms, which you've also received. Alan, over to you.
Like I said, we're using the first of April as a little bit of a, of a regeneration process, a refreshing process. We've had issues, there's very little movement. Like I said, the vet will start from the first of April. We've got to, I have devised a system to put that in place and will actually be testing that myself. And the only other two that we've actually done is we have to develop a credit vetting process that came out of our financial risk. So I've put that in place to have that done by the thirty days of June. It's more and more, we are doing more and more activities and we're actually just taking credit risk. So we have, no one's actually sitting back and saying, well, should we be providing credit to someone who we have no, no idea, you know, whether they can actually pay us and what, what risk we're taking. And then the POS system, we have started. And I think the issue that councillor Harvey raised previously about old stock, et cetera, where you have to start writing off old stock and you have regular stock takes and you actually post it into the accounting records, that's where we'll start getting assurance for that. So those are the, those are the two changes that have happened since we last did the schedule.
Any questions or queries on that, please, teams? Thank you, Alan, for your hard work. It's thought that we were seeing the light at the end of the tunnel and then we go and find you more jobs. You're very welcome. So we move on to eight two eight twenty one, correspondence to note and consider any other correspondence. Have we had any?
We have not.
Okay, thank you. And then we move on to eight two nine twenty one, which is the committee officers' update. Over to you, Alan.
Subsequent to, at the last meeting, we, we decided to go out, what is not the last meeting, the meeting before, we decided to go out for tenders for the RBL floor on the basis that we'd get a legal opinion to work out whose responsibility it would be to fund that. The legal opinion came in yesterday. We've got two legal opinions, so, so we went to two different legal firms. The first legal opinion says that they read into the lease agreement that we have a duty of care to ensure that the building is kept in a safe state of repair. And if this, if, if the ingress of, what they actually call it, the egress of water, which is water going out, the ingress of water was due to, due to a lack of repair, then we would be liable for that. The second legal opinion, which came in yesterday, basically says that there, there's a specific clause that says the tenant is excluded from a liability to the extent that any disrepair was caused by an insured event, by an insured risk, sorry. So just to go back one step, what we've done is we've actually gone to our insurance companies. They haven't discounted our claim on, on the fact that it's not, you know, it's, it's not covered by them. They've actually said, there's a whole series of events, so they're not too sure. You know, because there wasn't one event to be went and claimed that this has been cumulative. We actually can't say that event happened and that's caused the risk. So at the moment, we have a split interpretation of, of, of who's of what we need to do. So I have to have several internal discussions within the S and T. My personal opinion is that we actually are liable because it's a structural issue. It's, but we just need to just get that clarified. And then it's a better of, if we are responsible, we have to fix, fix those repairs.
On this, there is talk from the British Legion of, they're losing income because of this condition and everything. And we, some people are saying that they're losing income because we're not doing the repairs quick enough. That they have a claim on us for a lost revenue.
And if they wanted to pursue a loss of revenue claim, they would need to do that through our insurers. It's, it's, that's, that's, that's a legal discussion and not a, a decision that the council would make.
So what are we going to do?
Right here, right now, nothing?
That would be the recommendation to ask, because we haven't, we didn't have time to put it on this agenda, is to put it on full council next week.
We can't make that decision.
We can't make that decision here. The decision has been made that were we found responsible, we would utilise those monies. So the funding has been identified. It's, full council now needs to decide whether they do that or not. Yeah. Okay. So would we all like that to go on the full council agenda?
It's possible, it is possible.
We can make that decision here. Because it needs to be resolved and there are four councillors here. So just to be clear, you've proposed that it goes?
Obviously, it goes to full council.
Chris seconds that and all, are we all in favour? We're all in favour, so that fulfills the standing order requirement that at least two councillors need something to be added to a
Full council.
Full council agenda. Obviously, that is still within the gift of the mayor as chairperson. That sounded slightly more threatening than perhaps it should have done. But yeah, I, I, I think we need to move on this swiftly and, and resolve the issues. It has been going on for quite some time. Yeah, some, some of the parts have been out of our control because we have needed it to be assessed. I know full council expressed the need for it to be done in a sympathetic manner because obviously we have a listed building and that will involve Andrew Gayton in those works. Breckham councillor is the historic buildings officer, because we can't not do that. So it is going to be a slightly longer process than perhaps we would like. But on the plus side of things, there is no planning requirement needed, I don't believe.
No, we've, they have played for planning application, but we've also got Andrew Gayton's permission. He's happy for us to do the proposal, which is a long term solution of actually seeding the floor rather than just making good, as we said previously.
So, yeah, it's, it's just now the council's decision how they want to go, go forward with this. Yeah.
We've done all of that.
We have. Okay, anything else on committee officers' updates? Super. So we go on to eight three oh twenty one, community engagement to discuss and agree any consultation or media release required. Anything we need to shout about? I don't think so, nope. In that case, at eighteen thirty eight, this meeting is closed. Thank you very much for your time.